Allegiance to the flag of the right states in America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Call our meeting to order. Avoid embarrassment. Set your phone to vibrate if you don't mind. If you need a listening device, ask one of the county staff. And all our meeting documents are in the binder on the end by Commissioner Hyburger. They are also available during regular county business at the auditor's office if you'd ever like to review them. Said I call our meeting to order and I'll look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Bender, second by Hyburger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approve our commission meeting minutes for October 26, 2021.
Motion, Hyburger.
Second, Bender.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $585,662.53.
Move for approval. Benenga.
Second, Bender.
Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Personnel actions. Look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve. Bender.
Second, Benenga.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Good morning, Carrie. We've got a little bit of HR business to conduct.
Just a few items. The first is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for November, and we have a nice long list this morning. We have Eli Cho, John O'Malley, Heidi Heswick, Anna Kirkowitz, and Ron Fig, and Adam Eshin, all celebrating five years of service. Jeff Yarborough at Safe Home celebrating 10. We have two people celebrating 15 years. Mandy Maury at the State's Attorney's Office and Brett Danen at the Treasurer's Office. Two people celebrating 20 years of service. Keith Winia at the Air Guard and Vicki Fuglesby at the Register of Deeds. And then Joe Einig at JDC celebrating 30 years. I think we have at least a couple of them with us. Anybody want to say a few words?
Wave at us so we know who everybody is.
Just grateful to work for the county, and I must say, every day I learn something new. Excited to work in that kind of atmosphere.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the charity stuff to take down rest on his 20-year-old farm kids. It's a great company to work for and really going a long way. And I'm very grateful to be off to all the quality, like, start from the auditors, the ID, everything works well. So, very glad to be here.
Thanks.
All righty.
Am I missing anyone? I don't think so, but... Lot of years of experience in this memo.
And thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to volunteers. Do we talk about volunteers yet?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
A nice long list there, too. I think we went over the 200 mark this month. We have 202 people helping us out throughout the month of October.
Couldn't do it without them.
The next item starts the requests for you. We would... And start out with a request to authorize temporarily hiring variable hour support positions in the Treasurer's Office. And Chris Swanson is here to explain that a little bit more fully.
Morning, Chris.
Good morning, commissioners. Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. So, we're currently putting into place the plans that Dr. Tracy had recommended. And so, right now, what we have done, we are opening our doors now, just two of our windows right now until we have a bigger flow. We've opened our windows from 7:30. At 7:30, we've seen a slow trickle of people coming in. I think it's kind of word of mouth. We're gonna let it go by word of mouth so that it's not such a congested mess at the beginning of the morning. So, that's been kind of nice. So, and the staff actually really likes it. They think it's pretty good. So, that's been going well. Then I have a couple of people that stay from 5. If any of you have any late transactions, they finish up the transactions. So, that's going well, too. We are working on putting up signage in the main entrance area, giving clear instructions on paperwork needed for certain transactions. We've added chairs to the handicapped accessible area, making that more user-friendly. And we are making progress with answering phones in a timely manner. Now, we've got five people on the phone at one time, which has been very nice. So, we have not had any issues with that so far. Right now, we are currently recruiting for one open position. Dr. Tracy had recommended converting a full-time position into part-time staff to fill during the busiest times. I do agree that adding part-time staff would be beneficial, but given the office workload, I'm concerned with eliminating that full-time position. So, I will be asking for support to hire up to three part-time staff using our salary savings in 2021. Our payroll budget does not include part-time funds. However, salary savings from turnover will cover any 2021 costs, and I expect that there will be turnover in 2022 also. We are also in the process of just cleaning out the unnecessary stuff in the office. We've looked over at the jail for some place to store just a few of our many things that need to be stored and getting that cleaned up. And I'm working with Tyler Clatt. We're having weekly meetings, making sure everything is staying on task. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just want to thank you for being open to a lot of creative new ideas and trying some new things. And I'd be fully supportive of giving her the opportunity to hire some part-time staff and see how that affects the workflow and service availability to citizens. And I'm fully supportive of the request.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Just as her staffing is really tight right now. I think the commissioners are aware of that. You try to take a lunch break, that means you shut a window. And to add that extra half an hour in the morning and some extra time in the evening, you actually need additional staff just to cover all of those things. And so, yes, it's a very good thing, and it's fun to see that you're starting to work through some of those suggestions of Dr. Tracy. So, I'd make a motion to support this temporary hiring of part-time staff for the Treasurer's Office.
Second, Benenga.
Motion and a second. Additional comments? I guess I have one or two. You've said we're kind of doing this quietly so the media doesn't have to report this right now.
To start with, to start with, yeah. Shh. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The second one, are you gonna offer... My experience has been over the years that a lot of time, your full-time people like their job, but they don't want to work full-time. Are you gonna offer the part-time positions to the full-time staff first to see if there is interest there, or have you thought about how you're gonna handle that?
I have not thought of that and of it. As of right now, everybody that works there, I think, I believe, wants a full-time position. One thing I know that they do this in Minnesota is the part-timers, they have to start working part-time before they can actually be hired onto full-time. So, if there's ever a position where a part-timer wants to work full-time and we... Somebody retires or resigns, I can fill that position and then hire another part-time.
Backfill it, yeah.
Yeah.
And some, yeah, it can go both ways.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. No additional comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on with our HR.
The next item I have is a request to approve an exception to our policy on variable hour pay for 2020 for any employees who are earning less than $12 an hour. Right now, what those staff are entitled to receive variable hour staff is basically the equivalent of what a full-time budget employee would receive. Because we're having some concerns with the lower salary ranges, we would like to adjust everybody's salary up to at least $12 an hour, which would mean that they would need a larger increase. So, I'm asking for support for this. It only impacts about eight people, but we would at least make sure that we get them up to a base of 12. Everybody is watching what's going on in the community. I'm fully anticipating that we might need to look at additional adjustments, maybe potentially, in the future, but this would at least be a good first step.
Comments, questions? Motion? Commissioner Bender?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve. I think you'd have to be living under a rock not to understand how this is needed in our community right now. So...
Second, Hyburger.
Motion and a second by Hyburger. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then bumping our attorneys.
Yeah, next step. And you probably noticed that a few of these actions today all center around salary. I brought good news last week and so much that we had some savings from health insurance premiums. Really, we're hoping to address some areas of concern now that we have a little extra flexibility, and frankly, the need is there. We would probably need to do this either way. And attorneys are one area where we've had concerns in the past. You've approved a couple of special adjustments for them, I think in 2015 and 2017. We're back at a point where we really feel we need to increase the base level salary that we offer incoming attorneys. So, the proposal in front of you is to bump the base for attorney pay up by 5% or about two steps. And then to avoid compression, to give every current attorney on staff a 2.5% step increase or adjustment, except for our department heads. So, it would make a little bit of headway towards trying to be a little bit more competitive, but still, still pretty conservative.
Questions? I got one. I mean, what have our counter, you know, counties around us been doing, I guess, is what I mean? Are we keeping up with them, or has there been motions by them?
We have seen, I believe, a couple of our comparable entities have made adjustments recently, and people are continuing to look for more innovative ways. When I get the salary survey data, what we're actually comparing to are those comparable entities that we've talked about during past compensation studies. So, City of Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, Pennington County, City of Rapid City. We've got a couple comps in Nebraska, one or two in Minnesota, and one in North Dakota. So, entities that are comparable to our size, governmental structures. And then in addition, when we're pulling salary survey data, we look at some published surveys. It's a little bit more challenging for certain positions, including attorneys. But that's the data that we rely on when we're looking to see where we're really comparing.
All right. Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, Benenga.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Still you?
Still me. The last request really on the strictly compensation side is I'm asking for your consideration or at least discussion now that we know that we have some salary savings from the premium adjustments that were thankfully much less than anticipated. If there's any interest in using those funds to support a slightly higher matrix adjustment for staff and making this request for consideration because we know, I think we're all aware of the salary issues in the area, and this would allow flexibility for moving it from a 2.5% planned matrix adjustment to a 3%.
Commissioner Bender?
I'm fully supportive of this. I mean, we were, as a county, saw savings in the health side, and so we're using money that we would have already spent for staff on the health side into salary adjustments. I mean, I recognize that a half percent is not going to allow anybody to go to Hawaii or take a big trip. I mean, it's not gonna be a lot in a person's paycheck, but it, I think it shows good faith on our part that we really do want to take care of our employees to the extent we can, and this is one opportunity we have right now. I think also just given the competitive nature of the work environment right now in our community and across the nation, frankly, that this is a step to keep the county competitive to the extent that we can right now. And I'm sure we'll have to continue to watch the market and see where things are, but I'm fully supportive of this and would make a motion to approve.
Second, Hyburger.
Motion and a second. Additional comments? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Last one.
Last one is a request to consider approving the addition of Juneteenth or June 19th as a county holiday beginning in 2022. Saw a lot in the news over the past year about Juneteenth being added. We know that some of our comparable entities, the state, of course, declared it as a county. The city has added it as a county as well. So, I'm asking for discussion to see if you're interested in adding that as a county holiday as well in 2022.
Any comments, questions? I guess my thought is it's kind of hard for us to do business when all of our entities that we do business with are closed for the most part.
I think you would hear that from a couple of our department heads, that it certainly makes things a little bit more challenging, yes.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second by... Give that to Benenga. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We have no applications for abatement or notice and requests. We do have some planning and zoning notices. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And today I'm asking you to authorize the auditor to set a hearing notice or to publish a hearing notice to set a hearing for November 23rd for a rezoning request, 2103. This is for property that is located in Corson, just north of the railroad tracks at 25981482. The property owner is Lance Hulsbos, and he is rezoning his lot, which is about 1.66 acres, from A1 agriculture to light industrial. If you're familiar with this area, there's lots of light industrial around it or industrial uses. Directly to the west is railroad, the Midwest railcar. Across the road is Sweetman's mining operation. To the south, you have commercial uses like bottoms-up bar, and there's like a contractor's shop there. So, it's not a request. It's out of the realm of resibility, and the Planning Commission had a hearing last Monday, a week ago yesterday. They recommended unanimously for approval, and the minutes are included for your review. I can show you a quick map here. You can see the property in question is in red, and I'd ask to authorize, allow you to authorize the auditor to publish the hearing notice for November 23rd at 9:00 a.m. That would be in this meeting room, and I'd be standing by to answer any questions you have.
I'd make a motion to set first reading as of November 23rd for a public notice.
Second, Bender.
All right. Motion and a second for the hearing date of November 23rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Be on the 23rd. We have no petitions for compromise alone. We do have now the opportunity for public comment. Is anybody here that would like to address the commission on a non-agenda item? All right. Moving on then, we have our, we have a couple of presentations, and I'm just gonna ask our presenters to, as we've done with other groups that come before us. Please keep it to 10 minutes. I'm not running a clock, but if you could keep it to 10 minutes in the, you know, interest of the commission's time, we'd appreciate it. We appreciate you being here. And I'm gonna call up Mr. Sogstad from the Glory House first. Thank you.
Alan Sogstad, South Spring Avenue in Sioux Falls. I want to thank the commissioners for your consistent support for Glory House over the years. We, as you probably know, our longtime president, Dave Johnson, retired in September. And so, I'm, our presentation today is by two of our staff. First of all, our interim president, Nikki Dvorak, who has been at Glory House for 22 years and has taken the reins and well-qualified.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us time to talk to you this morning. Along with Alan, I appreciate your support over the years with Glory House. I've been with the agency not very long, about 22 years. So, I am gonna give just a brief overview. I recognize a few of the commissioners being familiar with our agency, but to be fair to our founder, I always like to recognize Roger Frederickson. Started our agency in 1968, and we have been faithful to his mission since that time.
Nicole, will you pull the microphone down just a little bit? So, thank you.
Okay. And so, with Roger's mission, we've been able to expand in different areas for the community and continue our support. Most recently, we have been working with the apartments. We opened the apartments in December of 2019. We are reached full capacity, and we are working with other stakeholders in the community in hopes that we... I'm sorry, I'm a bit nervous. I wasn't expecting this.
Nice people.
We support you.
Thank you. So, with Glory House Apartments, we're working forward in 2022, 2023 to expand the second unit and the third unit. And so, as we move forward, we are recognizing that we've got a few different things to work out. We are looking into not only efficiency units, we're also looking into maybe one-room, two-room efficient, or units. That way, we can provide services for families. And we do have the support of other community members, so we can piggyback with our services at the agency to make sure if they need some sort of... Whoa. They need some sort of continued services for treatment or individual counseling. We do base our programs on cognitive behavioral approaches, which are models in the community that are scientifically based so we can make sure that our clients are getting the best services, not only locally, but also nationally recognized. Most recently, we've been working with our staff to train them on trauma-informed care, and trauma-informed care really reaches over to the clients who have been victimized in their past. So, it's getting our staff more awareness, moving us more from the correctional piece to more of the therapeutic community. We did serve up until today. We have had 414 clients come into our agency, and we continue to provide outpatient services. We also have drug detection services. So, our services are really a continuum of care.
Is that 414 this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Questions?
Just a quick question, Nikki. How many of the 414 are fully employed currently?
Well, I am so glad that I brought the expert who supervises the client employment services of her staff. This is Kelly Cleveringa. She is the program coordinator of Glory House. So, I will have her talk about the employment services and case management and her other cognitive behavioral services. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Good morning. I cannot give you that exact number. What I can tell you is at any given day at Glory House, we have around 80 people living there. Typically, we are at a 85% to 90% employment rate with our people that are living there currently, and that's people that just walked in the door the day before. We get at least two new people in our services every day. So, we have to account for, it does take a little bit of time. We have two full-time employment staff that help our clients get employed, and really, their jobs have been quite easy lately. Our clients are getting better and better jobs and, you know, make more money than we do because of the labor force. So, it's been really, really fun and encouraging for us to watch. I also supervise our case management staff. They help our clients with just the day-to-day things that they need. A large portion of their time is spent helping people find medications. 99% of our clients do not have insurance, and they don't have money either. And then they have a lot of medical and mental health problems that require medication, so they spend a lot of time using community services, just trying to find ways to help our clients pay for those meds that they need to stay alive and healthy and emotionally well. And then we also have, in our counseling department, we have seven full-time counselors. They're all licensed addiction counselors, and then some of them are also licensed mental health counselors. We have a pretty wide array of services that we offer to try to catch different populations that we serve. Our most popular treatment service we're offering right now is intensive meth treatment program. As most people are aware, the meth has a really big impact on the brain. So, traditional treatment services that last maybe 30 days aren't quite meeting the mark because people's brains really need longer than that to heal when they've been daily meth users. So, our intensive meth treatment core program is 16 weeks. They're usually living with us for those 16 weeks, and then the whole program altogether is one year. I do have one really cool success story I'll share with you guys and then open it up to any questions. We have one contract with the Department of Corrections where we have people that are coming to us not specifically for addiction treatment, but as, they're just needing transition assistance from the prison to living in the community. The programs that the state has are all full, so we get some of their overflow. We typically get clients that have pretty severe problems because the prison isn't as equipped to deal with them as we are. So, many of our clients come and wait for social security, or they come for assistance applying for social security and end up being there a very long time. We've had a client that was in services starting in December last year. He'd been in prison for 25 years and then came to us. Obviously, that is a really big change for someone to deal with, and a lot of people really struggle. So, this summer, he was still there and going to school and working full-time and working part-time, but we were like, you know, it's time for you to go. There's other people that need your bed. You've got, he had $16,000 in his savings account. He didn't need to save any more money, but he was just really scared to take that next step. And he closed on a brand-new build home last week and moved out this weekend. That is, as far as we know, the first client we've ever had that was able to purchase a home from Glory House and move straight there. So, that was a really big moment for us and for him, and to go from being in prison to homeless technically and then move into your own home you bought is a really big deal. So, we're really proud of stories like that.
Any other questions for me?
No. Congratulations. I'm impressed with the number of people you also have working. That's just awesome. Housing is a big issue, but the next step is to try to find employment, and you've done a wonderful job doing that.
Housing is still a big issue for our clients, especially if they have violent crimes, but our apartments have helped us a great deal with that. And most of our clients are pretty excited and willing to go over there.
Excellent. Commissioner Hyburger?
So, you mentioned earlier that your additional buildings moving forward in 2022 and 2023, are these brand-new buildings and they're on your campus, and are they already fully funded?
They are brand-new buildings. They will be on our campus, and we did do a capital campaign last year.
Yes, and that is still in the works as we move forward.
And how many beds will that, or how many?
They each have about 25 units in them, and it's a mix of efficiencies, one-bedroom and two-bedroom, and then also some workspace for our employees as there's a building that we have employees working out of that will need to go to make room for them.
Thanks.
All righty. Very good job. Thank you. Made it through.
Thank you.
You bet. Moving on to our Helpline Center presentation. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. I think you have my PowerPoint presentation, and I think you've all had an opportunity to probably see it ahead of time, and I know you're familiar with the Helpline Center, so I'm gonna run through some of the numbers fairly quickly. But just to kind of give you an overview, the Helpline Center answers the 211 phone number and the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline phone number. If we move ahead to a couple of slides, I'll just share the numbers. The next one? Just looking at our trends so far in 2021, what you'll see up here is the first arrow talks about the total number of contacts that we've had, and that's been just over 67,000, and then the number below is specifically for Minnehaha County, and that's right around 31,000, just over that number. So, you know, that's, Minnehaha County always receives the most calls across the state to our phone numbers, and that trend has continued this year. The next slide will show you just what we saw in 2020, which was kind of a banner year for us, the highest number of contacts we've ever had, 110,000. And Minnehaha County had over 53,000 of those contacts. Most of those are calls, but we do answer text messages and emails, too, from individuals. The next slide kind of shows just the top needs of our callers that we've been seeing in 2021. Housing, food, and healthcare-related issues, not surprising with the pandemic kind of winding down. And then if you look, the next slide was what we saw in 2020. Those top three needs just kind of juggled around a little bit, but the same needs with the food and the housing and the healthcare, and we would anticipate, you know, that going forward, that we continue to see those needs. If you, there we go, updates, just what's happening at the Helpline Center. So, we have a brand-new website that we launched just a few months ago. Makes it even easier for people to find resources and gives them some opportunity to actually customize a list that they can print out as a PDF to take with them or give to a client. We launched an app this past summer, and we have already had 8,000 people who have downloaded that app, which allows them to search for resources very easily. The next slide just talks a little bit, our website. We just, when we updated, we created a new feature. This is the one that's right now because it's holiday time. Holiday Guides allows people to customize and build their own holiday. Holiday Guides allows people to customize and build their own holiday guide, whether they need help during the holidays or they want to give help during the holidays. So super easy feature to use on the website. Encourage you to take a moment to do that if you haven't had a chance. The next slide is kind of what's happening in the future and what all the planning is going on right now in my life is our 1-800 number, which we answer the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. We'll transition to 988 next July. So there's a statewide planning group that's been meeting, um, for the past nine months, and we've made quite a bit of progress, but we have more work to do, just to make sure that launch is as successful as possible. The next slide just tells you a little bit about, um, that 988 Crisis Call Hub, you know, what the vision of that is on a national basis. We will be one of many 988 call centers across the country, but obviously, we'll be staffed 24/7, just like we are now, but we'll be providing crisis intervention, phone, text, and chat, and, uh, clinical oversight, assessment of suicide risk, access to hopefully communicating with mobile crisis teams and behavioral healthcare facilities. Kind of looking at, um, 988 as what we call the air traffic controller. People who are in a mental health crisis, behavioral health crisis, having 988 is that first point of contact and assessing them, helping them get de-escalated in their crisis, and then connected to resources that are gonna keep them in stabilized, uh, kind of point. So we, of course, will meet NSPL standards. We already do that, um, and so there'll probably be some more standards that will be added with the addition of 988. The next slide just gives you a bigger picture of that crisis continuum of care and how the call center fits into that. So, um, there has to be a point of contact to initiate kind of access to services, and that is what 988, that crisis call center, will become across the country. The second part of that continuum of care is people that can go to somebody to support them. That is a mobile crisis team type of service, and then rescue is someplace to go, like a crisis stabilization, um, type of facility such as the LINK or, uh, inpatient behavioral health facility. So this, that, the 988 plays an important role in that. The next slide talks about, um, one of those partnerships that we are currently working on, and that is working with all of the PSAPS or 911 call centers across the country. The vision for 988, which is one of the reasons why the FCC selected the phone number that it did, 988, so it was, um, easily recognizable as a crisis point, just as 911 is recognizable as a crisis point. So we'll be working to establish MOUs and partnerships with all of the PSAPS across the state to figure out how we can best partner together to take the burden of those mental health or behavioral health calls off the 911 call centers and then kind of diverting them to 988, um, which is the intent, uh, nationwide. So we've already begun conversations with Metro Communications, and we have a wonderful working relationship with, with their team, and so, um, we've just, um, established a memorandum of understanding on how some phone calls that they currently receive could be transferred, uh, to the Helpline Center for my team to handle those calls. So excited to see that, um, unfold and see how it goes from there. And I think that is all of my update. Oh, I'll just, the next slide, sorry, my last slide. Sorry, I just always want to make sure when I talk about 988, that I let people know 211 is not going anywhere. We answer the 211 phone number, we will continue to answer 211. There are just very different reasons why people would call those two phone, uh, phone numbers. So 211, as you can see, are really basic needs kinds of things. Housing, food, clothing, that kind of assistance. 988 behavioral health. Any kind of crisis situation, emotional distress, um, substance use, that kind of thing. So just to kind of educate the public, when 988 is, uh, rolled out, unveiled, um, that people will be able to dial 211 or 988. They will both, in South Dakota, they will both come into the Helpline Center. We will have dedicated staff that answer 211 and dedicated staff that answer 988. The staffing on the 988, um, will carry a little bit more mental health expertise and credentials, as opposed to the staff on 211 will be more social service-based. So each, um, very good at what they do, just different expertise is what they'll provide through those two different phone numbers. So I'll stop there and see if you have questions.
The coming soon for 988, how soon?
July of 2022, so just around the corner.
Other questions, comments? Continue to dial 211.
Yes, and thank you for your support. I want to make sure and say that to all of you. You've been wonderful supporters over the years.
And a great thing for our community and our state. Thank you, Janet. And thank you to everybody that works with you. All right. We have some tax deed sales, and I'll call up Auditor Kite. Good morning, Ben.
Morning, Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yeah, so today we have a resolution in front of you to approve the sale of, uh, property at 420-8 North Janes. That was, um, that property we acquired and then sold to, um, Tax Deed Auction on September 25th. Uh, the purchaser of that, uh, property, uh, Cam Companies, um, paid the amount due of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy dollars, uh, in October. And we would ask, you know, to approve that, the resolution of that sale, so we could, uh, put the, um, the deed back in the owner's name.
Questions, motion? Make a motion to approve that tax deed sale? Benninga?
Second, Hybarger.
Motion of the second, call the roll.
Hybarger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benninga.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a few more.
I would just, uh, note on the tax deed sales, we did sell two properties. Um, the owner, or the purchaser of the second property, also Cam Industries, had asked for a, an extension on the, um, final amount due, around thirty-five thousand dollars on the, this other property on West Russell. I granted that extension, allowing him to, uh, make final payment due by November 10th, so hopefully he, uh, is able to complete, you know, whatever analysis he needs of that property, and then, um, I'll bring that next deed, uh, request to you hopefully in November 16th. All right. So, uh, next item, I guess, was the, uh...
Tax Payment Plan.
Yeah, the res, request to rescind, um, you know, Tax Payment Plan 1942. So, uh, on this one, uh, back in September of 2019, the Commission approved a tax payment plan on parcel number 2885. Uh, that parcel had back taxes due of slightly less than twelve thousand dollars, and the, um, the owner was supposed to make, uh, payments of approximately five hundred dollars per month. Um, the Tax Payment Plan Resolution does allow for, in the event that the owner of record does not pay all back taxes, penalties, and interest owning the property, in accordance with the aforementioned terms, Minnehaha County may proceed with the tax deed process. So that's, this is part of that, where, um, this particular, uh, property owner has made three payments, uh, of total, um, in October, November, and December of 2020. Uh, I've had contact with the owner. He's asked to, uh, reduce the payments, um, but it doesn't seem to me that he's got the capacity to pay. And, uh, it seems to be the best, um, course of action is to rescind this program to allow, uh, the county to move forward with it.
So before we take action on, because this is item number fourteen, we went over thirteen, because you said you granted them a few more weeks?
Uh, no, um, thirteen was removed from the agenda. It was, we, I'd ask it to be removed. Did we take that action?
Okay, so it's still on our agenda.
Okay, sorry.
So we're gonna have to...
That...
Make a motion to...
And to defer item thirteen?
Yep. I'll second that.
Okay, to...
Defer it to next, to our next meeting, and then we can rescind it, or...
Uh, well, okay, so on, on that particular item, number thirteen, we were unable to serve that property owner. So the State's Attorney's Office has advised me that we need to serve them notice that, um, this hearing is taking place. So if we're able to locate that property owner and serve him timely, I would, I would take it back here on the, the next meeting.
So we're not deferring it, we're just gonna...
Yeah, we're deferring it for two weeks, till our next meeting.
Yep.
And if you aren't able to serve him, then at that point, you'd have to remove it from the agenda.
Okay, good. That's fine.
That's fine. The other option, Eric Bo, State's Attorney's Office, sorry for the audio record, um, because we can't set the hearing until he actually is served, so it, it's maybe six, one, half dozen of another. If we defer it and he serves by then, that's fine. At some point, we, we won't be able to have the hearing until he actually can confirm he's been served, so... So we just assumed he had been before today's hearing, and that's why it was still on the agenda, but, um, we found out yesterday, I think it was yesterday, that he had not been.
Okay, so six, one, half a dozen of another, sounds like we're deferring it for two weeks to, um, the 16th of November. Do I need to do a roll call to defer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same signs, so thirteen's deferred, and now we're, um, rescinding...
Yeah.
The one that you just talked about.
Yeah, 1942, yes.
Make a motion to rescind, um, MC 1942.
I'll second that motion.
Motion of the second, call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Benninga.
Aye.
Hybarger.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. And one more.
Yeah, so, um, Resolution MC 19-29 was approved in August of 2019 on parcel 75076. Uh, the tax payment plan was for twenty-nine-hundred dollars and seven, twenty-nine seventeen, uh, with payments of 243, fourteen per month. Um, the, uh, that, uh, property owner's made a total of four payments, uh, in 2019, and, and three payments in 2020, and no payments in 2021. This particular one, I did have, uh, they, they, we served, we served them. Another family member called me after they received that notice, didn't, wasn't aware they hadn't been paying. I got the impression that, that all amounts that are due will be, uh, paid here, um, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, but, uh, I think we should just proceed with the rescission and, uh, uh, yeah, hopefully they will come in and, and, and pay up whatever's passed due on that property.
All righty. When would, uh, action for, like, a tax deed sale proceed on this?
Uh, we would, if any one of these ones, probably the earliest would be the spring of, uh, 2022, if, you know, that would, we're, we're hoping to have a tax deed sale in later March of 2022, if not, um, the fall of 2022.
Motion to approve the rescinding of MC 1929.
Second, Benninga.
Call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Benninga.
Aye.
Hybarger.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ben. And Jacob Morris, we have, um, a change order for Project MC 1701 Highway 146 Reconstruction. What are we doing, Jacob?
So this is the, the roadway, it would be south, south of Brandon, east of Sioux Falls, that we built last year and the year before. Um, so this is the end of the project. Um, we went over the contract amount with a couple of different items, so this is cleaning up the, I guess, project billing for the end of the project. We're not allowed to process a payout once we go over the contract amount, so, um, the second item on here is the balance of quantities, and the first item is, uh, non-perforated drain tile to restore some drain tile that we dismantled out on the project.
Questions of Jacob? Commissioner Bender?
So even though these are, um, change orders to, to increase costs, overall, we're still under the initial contract price, correct?
We are, yep. Um, at the beginning of the project, we, we adjusted some of the grading and took out some gravel to, to bring our cost down slightly. Um, so we are still below where we initially bid the project.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second, Benninga.
Call the roll.
Benninga.
Aye.
Hybarger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We have 2022 liquor license renewal applications. Susan, you drew the short straw.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Uh, just today, we wanted to, um, present to you the applications we have received for the 2022 liquor and wine license renewals, um, and just have, um, bring them forward for your review and approval.
Questions on any of these?
I think they've been reviewed, and there's been no issues with any of these...
Correctities. Correct. We have, um, submitted, um, these to the State's Attorneys, Planning and Zoning, and the Sheriff's Office, and there were no objections or concerns noted from them.
Commissioner Bender, did you have a question?
I was gonna ask the same question, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second, Bender.
Motion by Hybarger, second by Bender. Call the roll.
Hybarger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benninga.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
And what we've all been waiting for, a briefing on the American Rescue Plan Funds Act. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So yes, um, wanted to give everybody an update on the ARPA funds, where we've been at as far as kind of reviewing, uh, uses for those funds. So, uh, most of you might, might remember, we're, uh, Minnehaha County's scheduled to receive thirty-seven-point-five million in ARPA funds. Um, those funds have to be either spent by, uh, the end of 2024, or, uh, or expended, uh, committed and expended then by 2026. So the Auditor's Office and others, uh, in the county have been evaluating how to use its ARPA funds. We've kind of gone through three processes. First, we've been evaluating requests from local organizations, as many of you know, that would help, um, support the increasing water supply for Minnehaha County and the residents and/or, uh, treating wastewater for several communities in Minnehaha County. So we've, that's been the bulk of our organizations outside of Minnehaha County, um, that request for, uh, use of these funds. Um, we've also been evaluating the needs for Minnehaha County through the meetings with the departments to understand the services they provide, and this has been very helpful for us as we've, um, been meeting with, uh, these departments. The conversations have really highlighted several previously unconsidered uses for ARPA funds, and it, it could free up, that could free up general funds. So I guess, for example, we've met with the, the Sheriff's Department, uh, they highlighted lots of uses that they think, um, could use for ARPA funds. We've also met with, um, JDC. They've highlighted several potential uses for ARPA funds. Uh, we've met with facilities, they, they've kind of identified some particular items that we could use, so I think there's, there is more potential for use for internally for Minnehaha County than we would have originally, um, appreciated. And then, uh, recently, many of you may be aware that the US Senate passed Bill, um, 3011, which provided more flexibility to, uh, counties and how they could use, um, funds. Um, in particular, that bill allows for, uh, up to ten million or thirty percent of the county's total ARPA funds to be used for allowable infrastructure projects, and then an additional ten million of the county's total ARPA funds to be used for general services. So, uh, you know, this would allow, you know, eleven-point-two-five, uh, million of, of allowable infrastructure projects and ten million for allowable general funds, so total about twenty-one million dollars that we could use, uh, internally just from that change in the, uh, the law. Uh, that, a, a similar bill has been, uh, sponsored by the US, by US Representative, uh, Johnson and the US House Representatives, but it's not been, um, brought to the floor for a vote. So just considering the possible expanded use of ARPA funds and the additional internal uses identified by Minnehaha County, the amount of ARPA funds related funding for Minnehaha County may be, uh, we, Minnehaha County may be able to use to support real initiatives, or local initiatives, is no, unknown at this point, but I think we would still, uh, welcome organizations to submit requests for funding that qualify under ARPA guidelines, but it, almost they understand that the amount of funding that may be available through this source may be limited. So any questions on that?
I guess my only question, if I might, I'm sorry I interrupted. Do we have any clue on when Congress is gonna finalize this conversation? I mean, it's been going on for months.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm, I would get, I would, felt, being aware of what's going on, I would say they're probably distracted with other items right now, um, that I don't know when, um, the US Congress, or US Rep, House Representative will take this up. We were quite surprised to see that, oh, uh, quickly this went through the Senate. It's like it came up one day, it went, uh, unanimous vo, voice vote, it was approved. You know, and, and so, but, yeah, we, we don't know what, um, action or when the House will take this up.
Okay.
Commissioner Bender.
I was very encouraged to see that our Representative Dusty Johnson is the prime on this bill, and, um, I would be, I mean, it's just a very common sense bill to give local control over these funds, so that people, um, local decision-makers can make the best decision for their constituents and how to spend this money. So I would really, um, urge the House of Representatives to take it up and pass it in a day on a voice vote, if possible, so... So I would really urge the House of Representatives to take it up and pass it in a day on a voice vote, if possible, so.
Cut the strings.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Yeah, it's going to change the outlook for what the county commission has to decide as far as what we can, we're going to do. So I know we have great interest in our, in the money that was given to us, but if we can do more to keep our county budget flush, I think that just makes sense.
Right.
Alrighty. Thank you, Ben. All right, we have Mr. Weenya from the Sheriff's Department here. We have a security guard, right, Air Guard Security Protection Agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners, Keith Weenya, Air Guard Division Supervisor. Just want to draw attention, first and foremost, to my memo to you guys. Missing a million dollars there on the new agreement amount. So the actual agreement amount is one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three. So that's just ten dollars more than our projected cost. But at the end of the fiscal year, we, we kind of project more of a cost savings than that, so it won't be that close just with personnel actions we got going on, so. But I'm seeking your approval for the Air Guard Protection Agreement with the South Dakota Department of Military, starting in October here, last month through September of '22.
I'd make a motion to approve the Air Guard Security Protection Agreement. And if we find, you know, you're off by ten dollars, we'll find the ten dollars somewhere else.
Yeah, we, if we need more money with that, the Air Guard has a process for that, and we would, they'd cover it, so.
Second, Hiberger.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Benninga.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
All right, liaison reports.
It's a quiet week.
Yeah, no kidding. All right, no liaison reports, new business. Old business. All right, look for a motion to go to recess, because we do have executive session.
For recess?
Second, motion, Bender.
Motion and a second, go to recess till 10:05. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are at recess.
I think everybody should...